So we did have an idea this year to try and turn things over to the people and let folks submit questions. And that was a lot of the feedback I've received from the first two forums that we did, twenty-two and twenty. But nobody gives questions, funny enough. So we're gonna have to win this tonight. This is gonna be fun. I do have a few questions, but literally like two or three. So that's how we're gonna have to go as far as everything tonight rolls out. Uh, one thing I will say, uh, since you do have, I'm sure, a good amount of people watching on Facebook and of course you've got people here tonight. Uh, I want you guys to kind of treat this as your job. You're trying to make sure you explain to voters and you want people to circle in your name on the ballot spots. So this is a very important night and I think the attendance here kind of speaks volumes to how people think about election today, but I think it's important and I think you guys do too. And that's what matters is, uh, local governments, uh, the bodies, that's really, uh, oh, they gotta say this. That's really what's, that's really what drives us through Graham County and I'm a little disappointed to see the lack of folks here tonight, but I hope everybody does enjoy what we do nonetheless. So if you guys would, uh, Lynn, Connie, if you make sure your mics are on, just have to hold the button down over there for a second. They'll turn, mine will turn green and you'll be live. There you go. And we'll just go left to right. We'll start with Lynn. I just want each of you to first of all, just introduce yourselves. Tell everybody who you are. You each have two minutes to do so. I want to keep it kind of a time limit on that, but just tell us about yourself, your background, et cetera.
Okay. Well, good afternoon. And, uh, first of all, uh, I want to say thanks to the good Lord for sparing us from the hurricane that actually affected our neighboring counties. And also the people of Graham County that are working in those areas to help other people in need. Um, I'm Lynn Cody. I, I'm from Stegola. I was born and raised there. Uh, went to school per se all my life. I've got two bachelor's degrees. I've, uh, recently finished my certification for accounting and also finance officer for the state of North Carolina. And also, um, I finished my, uh, certification for my, uh, advanced human resource management, SHHRM. And also, um, I am active with the community. I am the fire chief with the Stickle Fire Department and Rescue Squad. And I've served that position for thirty-seven years. And so, uh, my point of view is to be able to help the people of Graham County. I have been elected since ninety-three off and on. And I have, my biggest goal was to, to help someone in need and do what I possibly can to help each and every person. I don't do it right. I'm not perfect. I try to take and help for those that's, that's, needs housing, needs assistance. Uh, our Connie and I, we work with, uh, used to be spoken about mental health, N S V I, V I A. And we're working in different areas and we, we work with, uh, I'm on the senior board with Western North Carolina. And one of the things is I'm proud of Graham County where we have, we have stumbled, but we're gradually making progress. It takes time and it takes process. A lot of people, you know, things, things can happen overnight. It can. There's a lot of things that happens that has to take place in the background. But one of the things is I'm here to help. And that's what I'm, that's the reason I'm, I'm doing this. A lot of people says I'm crazy. Over the years, they, they think I'm mentally challenged. And, but if you can help one person survive or put somebody that has been living in a house that has fallen down, it's leaking the floors and stuff. And we can actually get them a new home or something to get them in, to help them. We've succeeded once. But we're trying over and over. And one of the things is, is just trying to make sure we're getting healthcare here. We're working on that strive. And one of the things is Megan, I'm thanking her because she worked with the urgent care for years and helped pick ones. And that's one of the things that I just want to be able to do what I can to help.
Thank you, Lynn. Uh, Connie, go ahead.
Well, uh, hello, everybody, friends, neighbors, family, people that work with us and hopefully give us guidance anytime that you want to speak to us. I want it to be a situation where you're, you feel very comfortable picking up the phone or coming by my house even and letting me know what your concerns are and what your problems are. Now, I'd much rather talk about something else. Kevin, Kevin asked me to talk about me. And Lynn said that he is from Secola. Well, I'm, I'm kind of half and half. My mother is from Secola Creek and my, my dad came down this way from Yancey County. One of the very hardest hits, uh, places during the storms. So please do keep those people in your prayers. Um, the best information I can get is that, that everybody has been reached. Um, and everybody has been accounted for that was lost. So we hope and pray that that is so. Um, my goal when I first, uh, decided to be a county commissioner was to have a platform to work for veterans and to, uh, raise a veteran flag that would let any veteran anywhere know that Graham County and the people here respect them and appreciate their service. So I have volunteered for veterans since two thousand eleven. Uh, as far as the mental health, that is a crisis. Uh, the drug problem that we have on every level. And I do hope and pray that we are making progress there. Because I'm certain there's not a single person here or listening to this, uh, newscast that has not been affected in some way by this mental illness. It's terrible and we gotta keep up the fight. So we do work for, uh, via, um, health group and they're all about, uh, mental illness. I also serve as a board member for the Southwestern Commission. All the, uh, funds that come through Western North Carolina, federal and state, come through the Southwestern Commission. And all seven Western counties work together for the highest and best use of the assets that we have coming through that organization. It's called the Council of Government. Pardon me. And I will tell you, we have the best council of government in the state of North Carolina. Um, they work every day to try to help all the counties pull together to improve the quality of life, uh, to improve the workforce, to assist the aging. We have a council for the aging. Um, all of our programs that are funded state and federally come through that organization. It's a wonderful organization. Um, just recently, uh, started a pilot program through the Southwestern Commission and Department of Commerce to help our local businesses here in Graham County. We have funds available on many levels, but we had no funds available for small businesses. So we do have that running now and it has been successful. It will grow and become more successful. So we're real, real proud of that. Can't get far from that mic, can you?
Very close.
How much time have I got? Uh, as far as, I'll stop right there, but as far as my education, I graduated from Robbinsville High School here. Um, my parents went to work in the cotton mills. When I was in the first grade and I would tell folks along that my parents held me hostage in Charlotte for five years. And my mom would say, would you quit saying that? But I did not like the black country. And the way I got back was if you've never been around a cotton mill, it sounds like a war zone. And my daddy was in the Second World War. So he had another major breakdown and we were able to come back to the mountains. So that was just a side of that. Um, hard time in our lives that I'm very, very grateful for. I love family. I love my church. I'm active in my church. Um, and also active in raising money for the heritage museum and festival. I work closely with our legislators to, um, build relationships so that when any one of you, um, certainly any, any one of our local elected officials need to get in touch with them. And I know Jacob, you would attest to this. You can pick up the phoning column and they will answer you. So I graduated, uh, School of Banking and Finance at North Carolina, NC State University, go to Targills. And especially again, um, thank you, Megan Thomas. Um, you, what's your name? Lynn. Or, um, putting yourself out here and being willing to serve the people of Skinnon. They're worth it. We've got the best people in this county in the whole world. And I am a reason, I wouldn't say that if I wasn't certain. I could back it up with facts. So um, once again, thank you all for being here and I look forward to working with each and every one of you in any way that I ever can, every day.
All right. Thank you, Donna. So we've met our incumbents. Let's meet our challenger, Liz. Let's start with Thomas Bernard. Thomas, go ahead.
Hello.
I like it.
Hello.
Jared Motts anyway. Shag. That's good. Yeah, I work.
Hello, I'm Thomas Bernard. Uh, first off, I want to apologize for my voice. If I lose it, I'm still trying to get over a sickness I had last week, but. So I'm forty-two. I graduated from Robbinsville High School. Uh, I've been everything from a labor to a foreman superintendent. Um, worked for Level Seventy-two, Level Five-twenty's pot feeder. Uh, currently, I'm working for Graham County as the Recreation Director. Do some building stations and me and my wife do, uh, subcontracting with the federal government with a, uh, great local contractor here in town. My wife's name is Fallon Menard. I've got four sons, Taylor, Evan, Cannon, and Brayden. Um, so I don't have a specific agenda and I, and I sure don't have anything against any of these guys. Um, what I would like to do is, is run to just give you a, uh, an option for somebody you can come to with any ideas to help anything. Um, we need jobs for kids. I've got four boys. I'd like one day, it's, it's unfortunate enough to have grandchildren, but if they want to, they, they can work here in Graham County. How will we get there? I can sit up here and honestly tell you, somebody up there might know. So I would like to be somebody you can come to with an idea and have confidence that I'm gonna share it with these guys and we're gonna talk about it. And no ideas by it. There's no bad idea. So, you know, I just, uh, I'll work hard. I'll work for you. I've, uh, I've always worked hard. And, uh, you can have confidence. You come to me with anything. I will hear you out and I will share it. And, uh, we'll see what we can, what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Feel better. I beg to thank you. All right, baby. Get your floor.
So my name is Megan Smith. Everybody here is okay. So, uh, I'm thirty-four years old, uh, born and raised here in Graham County, local girl. So I am married to Brittany Smith. I have two sons, an eight-year-old, Branger, and a nine-year-old, Brayden. The Lord has blessed me with a wonderful family and I feel that He has also led me to be here. I never thought I would be here. It's a little bit, uh, terrifying if you ask me, but, um, I've always had a passion for serving others. Uh, you might, may or may not recognize me from working at the urgent care um, for about five years through the pandemic. You probably don't recognize me because often you have the masks and all the PPE on. Prior to that, I worked at the local nursing facility for ten years in management. Actually worked my way up from being a CNA, worked all through, um, college. I actually graduated from Tri-County Community College at R N after being a CNA for about five years. And then I went on to get my bachelor's degree. And then I thankfully was able to go on to get my master's, nurse practitioner. And glory to God for that. Cause I, I was known by him and he gave me the ability to do that. So I have to praise him for the strength to do that. And so basically, I, I, like Thomas, I want to be here for the people. I've kind of seen, um, some of the gray areas and it's no fault to anyone. I believe that it's a challenging position. But I guess one of my strengths that I have, thankfully, as being a provider, is I have a listening ear. And I want to be able to listen to you and apply that, um, the best way that I can. Uh, I may not have all the experience of these wonderful folks every year have. Just being a young person starting out like this, but like I said, I do have a listening ear. I'm always willing to learn. I'll go that extra mile. As long as, as long as I make it to. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Megan. Uh, I would like to mention that Michelle Chris was also running, but she was unable to attend. Uh, she had a, uh, work commitment. So I wanted to pass along her regards for that. She did contact Michelle Taylor, so she was not able to be here. Well, since we only have, I guess, two functioning mics over there, we'll have to just share one each. Take, we'll have that sound, guys. Very good. All right. So my first question was a submitted question. I'm gonna try to kind of reword it. My idea for this was to have people submit questions and then I have enough to ask individually one each. I don't have that. So everyone gets to answer the same question. Not one. We'll just rotate who starts first. Of course, I have to do it that way. So our first question brings up the Graham County Public Library. It is, uh, currently underfunded and has had to cut back recently due to some, you know, funding issues on services. What plans do you have to try to help out the library? Very important part of this community. Start with Lynn.
Okay. Is it working? Well, one of the things is I work for a library system, but I work for Fontana Regional Library, which is, uh, Swain, Macon and Jackson County. I was a finance officer for, um, I'm not sure. Uh, the, the Nanahalo Regional Library System is, uh, Graham, uh, Cherokee County and Clay County. Now, I'm not, I've not seen their financials or anything and I'm not sure why they're having to cut back. Because, uh, our budget this year was in, there, there was increase for. And, and I'm not sure. I know, uh, Mr. Shook is the director for the, the library system and, uh, we have not been approached about anything. It's been, uh, stated to be cut back. Uh, but it'd be interesting to see their financials to see why those, uh, why there, there's a system. Because in the role that I am in is where we apply for grants for certain projects. We take and, uh, apply for, uh, the digital inclusive grant, if y'all know what that is. That's where you have, uh, trainees come in and train people that's not familiar with computers. Learn how to take and use computers. We have hotspots that we actually, uh, let people check out. It's for, if they don't have internet systems. And, and I'm sure the region should, Nanahalo region should have the same opportunities as we do. And also we have an E-race system, which is federal grants that we apply for. That is to help with, uh, some of the funding and to be able to get some of the reimbursements for such as, uh, internet costs, uh, phone systems. Anything's electronic, software, but those things, we get reimbursed like eighty percent of those funds. So that way it goes back into our budget. Be able to help some of those salaries and stuff to be able to compensate those. Um, but I, I don't want to elaborate on another reason because I don't want to take and have a conflict, but I would like to be interested to see their, uh, their financials to see why the dissite points. Okay, very good. Same question for Connie.
Okay. Um, just to piggyback on what Lynn said, I have reached out to Mr. Shook, although I really don't know him. Um, and asked, uh, that he call me and just to get some information. We, we took a really hard leap when we lost our librarian, uh, Ms. Griffin. Uh, she had, uh, increased the activities at our library from zero to ninety or a hundred over the years that she worked there. Uh, we had quilting, we, we had so many things that we'd never done in the library before. I've also, uh, could, uh, contacted some of my friends who were initially, um, the, the committee and group that forms, uh, a fundraising for this library that we have sitting down here. And thank you, Janice, for your years, many years of service there. And I, I'm certain I'll be calling, calling you because you'll have more information about the library system than I do. But it is extremely important for our community, our school kids. Um, the people who don't have connectivity. I'm on Beach Creek. Uh, so that would be a good stop for me if I, if I needed to, uh, even get a cell phone call. So it's very important that we, um, get, get the information. My voice is kind of like Thomas who's there, but I raised him, so we ought to sound the same, so. Uh, but I am looking for information to get, um, I won't even call it a committee, but a group who is interested in getting the facts and getting moving in the right direction for our, uh, library. We certainly don't want to see it go down any further. Um, we need it here and I, I completely support every effort, um, to that end.
All right. That's all down there. We'll get Thomas to answer as well. And you, you mind repeating that question?
No, not at all. So libraries recently had some funding cuts. And what are your plans trying to help to rectify that? And of course, you support the library, I'm sure. So what are your plans for helping the library?
Well, uh, I think we've got an outstanding library. Um, as far as why there's, there's cuts or anything like that, I, there's no way I can answer that. I, I, I don't know what the numbers are on, you know, on, on any of that. So anything we can do to support our library, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna be fully for it. As far as like, uh, decisions that are being made right now, I would need just, just be making something out of this. Like, oh man, all that. Um, and you, and you, and you're probably gonna hear that a lot from me. And that's one of the things is everything I do, I will have to learn. And all these processes, you know, I, you know, the numbers on different issues and this and that. Um, you know, it's, it would, it would just, just be clear that the learning process for me. Where's yours?
Okay. All right. Megan?
So I, like Thomas, I, I, I don't have a lot of involvement as, at the time. Um, as far as why there is funding cuts, I would have to look into that. Um, that's very unfortunate. I mean, this is a group that my son was very fond of. I actually really dreaded telling him that he was, it's not, not a fun thing to do. He enjoys going there a lot. And so one of the things that I will mention as far as my focus. Now with having children, being loved more than, like, uh, others, I would like my children able to work here in the future and have grandchildren, all that. So um, I do want to focus on my children and I do want to fo, focus on the elderly. Um, so basically, to answer the question, um, I would be willing to sit down with the grant riders in the county. Um, we need to do fundraising until the budget does take over the next fiscal year. Um, and then once the budget does come about, I believe that our library does need to take priority because that's for our children. And I believe it also does service on the elderly. So that needs to take priority, um, in this community.
Okay. Very good. And again, these are submitted questions. So some of us may know about, we may not. So here's the next one. We've actually had this going with the commission meetings recently, which is, uh, the overpopulation of stray animals in Graham County. And we've had some people coming in about, uh, doing laws for, uh, breeding and leash laws and want to control AMPD and all that stuff. So the question is, what plans, if any, do you have for helping the overpopulation of stray animals in Graham County? Are there any plans to try and bring in a shelter or a spaying or clinic for, for some kind of a breeding law? And we'll start with Connie and rotate around this time.
Okay. I love cats and dogs and about any kind of animal. And, um, when I was probably five or six years old, we got a little rabbit hurt or a bird. I had to save its life and then, uh, I would get in trouble because mom would make me put it outside the house when it's cold weather. And then I'd lose it during the night. So then I would be in trouble. Um, animal, uh, population and the population that we have, that we see in Graham County, it, it's not as high as some of our, of our neighboring counties. However, the cost is just as high. We are on a tight budget. We, our citizens are strapped to the limit with taxes. We cannot, uh, lay another five hundred thousand or million dollar bill on our taxpayers uh, for a shelter for animals. And growing up, um, we were raised to take care of our own animals. That doesn't mean everybody does that. I carry cat food and dog food in a trunk of my car all the time. Uh, I was bringing my brother home from the hospital one time and, um, we just got off of, uh, the mountain and here's that hound dog about starved to death. And I pulled over and, and my brother wasn't feeling so well. Anyway, he said, Connie, I was gonna die anyway. And I said, not today, because I'm gonna feed it today. So I love animals. Um, as far as getting a program or a process in place, we have an, um, an individual in the county to take care of feral animals who, uh, that have, maybe dangerous. And, and we pay, um, for that care. And then, then we have people who just, uh, adopt animals. And it's not a good thing for me where I can't throw a dog to come by my house because it's likely they might get stray. Some of y'all that know, pardon my voice too. Some of y'all that know Roger, um, Millsaps, he, he's a minister, was a minister, is a minister. And he lives where my, uh, niece, Rhonda and Billy Anderson live right now. And I worked in the local bank at the time. And there was, there's a hound dog down at Tather Gap Road. It was there every morning when I went to work at the bank. So I fed it every morning. And then we had a revival of a Sweetwater about a month after that. And Roger called me out. Uh, he said, there's been an old dog hanging around the house up there. We've run it off every day and it just kept getting fatter and fatter. I looked out one morning and here's Connie or four and out dog food. So just know that I am concerned about our animals. Um, if, if we could get a program, uh, even if it's just quarterly, um, monthly would be better where we can have a spaying and neutering clinic. If we could get someone to help us with the cost of that. Uh, that would be a great help to us here. I don't have a solution, but I do care about animals a lot.
All right, Thomas.
So she's right. Um, a, a shelter or anything, anything we do like that's gonna be extremely expensive. I, I, I too care about animals. I've got a dog. I've got a cat. Uh, I know there's a lot of people around this county that work, they, they work their tails off. Uh, I know there's a lot of people around this county that work, they, they work their tails off, getting these animals up, getting them somewhere to stay, doing the best they can. I know they need help. Uh, but this is, this is an extremely expensive thing. That's one thing I know for sure. Um, one thing I, I, I'd like to add, you know, we, a, a shelter would be great. Uh, anything we can do to help these people would be great. But one thing I think we all need to think about too is, uh, animals is one thing. But there, there are people that I went to school with. That's, oh, they're, they're sleeping by the creek down here, too. They're, they're sleeping on a rock, literally on to Loofer. Rain, snow, sleet or hail, that's where they're at. Now, whatever situation got them there, I, I don't know. No, I know this is a whole nother challenge in itself. But let's talk about the whole thing. Let's talk about stray dogs, stray cats. Yeah, sure, let's, let's help them. Now let's start thinking about this other too. Because now they are humans that we all know that are, uh, this is a problem that ain't going to go away. This is something, you know, we, we, we seriously need to think about the, uh, and, and, and too, that's going to be even more expensive. So, you know, let's, let's think of both. I, I, I agree that we need something. I think these people need help. I think awesome for doing what they're doing. Uh, let's look at the whole thing and, and we'll just, best to figure it out.
All right, Megan.
I have to say that was a really good point, Thomas. So as far as for stray animals, um, I do feel like there, that is a problem here unfortunately. And I ha- I do have some contacts that I have spoken with about this as far as just volunteers in the community. And thank those people for doing that because they are special for doing that. Um, it's a lot of work from what I understand, um, and it takes a lot of people. Um, I know Jacob has had to, you know, help with this in the past and I just don't, Stevens helps with this some and then I believe my dad and my older does that now. And then I, I know Brittany Holder, she does a lot of this as well. So, um, I feel like what we should probably do, um, if I have a say, so of course, is form a committee. Um, and brainstorm ideas, um, get those people that stuck their feet on the ground to come in and tell us, what can we do, uh, with our resources that we do have? Um, and then let's just feel it all for that because we can't just go from ground zero to a new shelter right away. It'd be lovely if we could, but it's just not realistic. But we, that doesn't mean that we can't work towards that. So I feel like, like I said, let's form a committee, um, get those people's input and then see where we can do.
Very good. Lynn, last one on this question.
Can you, yeah. It worked, yeah, go. Well, the control is something that, that we've been handling with for years. We have worked with the Humane Society. And, um, at times it's been good and at times it's been bad. But one of the things is we've been trying to strive to make sure that we do our level best. Swain County has, or is in the process of opening a new shelter. They have reached out to us to see about possibility, partnership with us on doing some type of, uh, control. But one of the things is, it's like Connie was talking about. Um, I have a wife that feeds everything that she sees. She's got dog bones and everything else in the vehicle if she sees one. Even if we're in doing something, she's always trying to give somebody's dog bone. We have, and have pets. We've got one that is basically spoiled raw. She has been, she's literally treated like a child. And I've been raised all my life, been a, we have raised animals all our life and we, we've had dogs, cats, cows, horses, you name it, we've had. And one of the things is we have taken care of our own. And some people get upset when you take and start pushing things on somebody that has paid a lot of money for a hunting dog. That they want you to put restrictions on that dog. They want you to do this, they want you to do that. You got to compromise a little bit. But one of the things is people will take care of their own, but there are some people that let's it get out of hand. And it's just like Connie stated, we need to have some sort of partnership with some vets and stuff to where we can get some of these animals spayed new. That way it's going to slow down some of the population. But one of the things is Graham County has worked for years with trying to help. And sometimes we run into a storm wall, but we still, we still try to help do whatever we possibly can. Uh, there's new restrictions, the, the, the director for the Humane Society, that, uh, uh, Valley River had was, was recently at one of the meetings and he was talking about needing hundreds of thousands of dollars for improvement. We don't have that funds to be able to do that. And it's just like, uh, Thomas was talking about, we've got people literally living day to day. And we're trying to strive to make sure those people are taken care of. And sometimes they fall through the cracks and we, and we're trying to do our best. But our animals, I know there's a lot of people that has conflict about certain things. But we have to do what we can to help what we can.
All good answers to that topic for sure. All right, so the next few questions I'll ask is simply going to be, what is your policy on blank? And then I'm going to just kind of rotate through one, I'll skip to another, then another. So we're going to start with sanitation, as you know, because that's obviously been a hot button topic lately. Uh, I know there's plans in most right now to try and get Bear Creek back open, but you're still working with restrictive hours and all of that. So what is your policy and how do you plan on implementing it? Thomas, we'll start with you on, uh, sanitation.
So again, this is going to be one of the things that we're, I, I will need to see the numbers that, that these guys, it's, listen. I know that, uh, when they, when they shut the dumpsters down, they were, they were doing it with thought that this is going to save them some money. Uh, I don't know everything that went into the decision making to, uh, to, to shut them down or to reopen. Uh, the, the only thing that I can say is I, I would, uh, I would, I would just have to look at the numbers they're looking at, the projected numbers of where this might lead if we do, you know, A, B, or C. Get all these, get everybody together. We're, we're going to have to talk about it, I mean, for sure, before any decisions is made. There's no question about that. Uh, I, I can't tell you exactly, I, I, let's say, I, I don't know where those numbers takes. Um, I do know this, I do know that, that's people feel like they don't get, they don't get services. Uh, so where, where that takes is I, I'm not sure. But what I can see that is that in those meetings, you, you will, you know, you'll get straight matter-of-fact numbers from me. You, you will know, you know, this is off N A, this is what it's going to cost you. This is what it's going to cost you later. This is off from B. You, you, you see what I'm saying? Uh, and that's really, without having the info in front of me, that's really all I can say and I sure didn't promise you anything. Uh, but, but yeah, I mean, we, we, we would certainly just talk about it and see if we can work it out.
All right, Megan.
So on the topic of sanitation, I feel like that we, we have to do the best that we can to make sure our county is not destroyed with trash on the roadways and the size of the roads, off the embankments, on the grid. Um, and this is no offense to anybody that was involved in making these decisions because I don't know what all went into that and what went to that. But, um, just from my point of view, I feel like this does need to be readdressed. Um, I feel like that we need to put all the options on the table and we need to weigh out each thing. Um, and I feel like we need a lot of community involved. We need transparency for people so they understand why the decisions were being made. Um, and so they have an input and I know that they did, um, offer a public forum, which was great. And I hope that we see a lot more of that. Um, but I do feel like, like I said, this needs to be readdressed. Um, it just, in my mind, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to have sites manned during the day and then they're not manned at night. So, you know, a lot of these folks out of town is coming at night and they're just dumping all this construction waste and whatnot. So. And I understand also on the other point of view that it costs a lot to pay people overnight. So, um, as far as what the solution is, I feel like it would take a community, um, effort to come up with some options and, and decide what would be the best thing moving forward.
All right. Lynn, what does mine count you or you've got one or two to go? It's okay, go for it, let's all use.
Um, one of the things about sanitation thing, system is, is, um, years ago, we had a landfill. That landfill had to be closed. So then all the garbage had to be collected and hauled out to the camp. That cost us money to have that hauled and we have to pay for disposal. But the biggest thing is that one time you could go down any road in Graham County and there was green cans everywhere. And one of those things is those green cans also, uh, created hazardous because of, uh, stray dogs, because people would just drop them off and everything else. But one of the main things was especially like Bear Creek and Sticko. Bear Creek was getting all the garbage from Cherokee County and also down into Swain County from the head of gourds. People was bringing it up there and a lot of times they were just dumping it on the ground. And our sanitation workers had to pick it up. And Sticko the same way, people from Swain County was bringing it there, dumping it in the green cans, filling them up. The worst thing was, is when you go, when you went to take and dump your garbage, there was always somebody in the can. Multiple times have I been there and people have put their kids in there throwing things out. And you confront them and say, do you really know what's in that can? You know, that's just not a good place for those kids to be. And it's just like talking to a wall. But, you know, we're trying to get them cleaned up, trying to get them more organized. Right now we have got some that's, that's manned. And they're, I think they're running about twelve hours a day. Uh, but we're trying to take and make sure that we can get some of them, uh, rebuilt. I think the Bear Creek section, we're trying to get that fence redone. As y'all know, we can't just take and just order fence, fencing anymore because it has to take months to get anything. But we're going to try to rotate now. And we have talked to a lot of the people from Bear Creek community about that. Trying to get that to where we can get that back up open and get it fixed up for them. But one of the things is, does it make it, uh, financials just to have dumpster sites within a mile of each other, two miles of each other? That's the question that we have to ask. Is it, is it worthy to spend tax dollars to have something set up just a mile down the road where you can just go a little bit further and just empty your garbage? But one of the things is, is we're trying our best to get this under hand. And one of the main things is, the state inspector, if he comes in and he sees garbage on the ground in front of one of those dumpsters, it's twenty-five thousand dollars a day. Point blank, no questions asked. And he has made that statement the next time he, uh, and he comes to Graham County and he finds a site that's like that, we're going to get charged. We have spent thousands of dollars over at, uh, Fontana, over at Prince Cove, over cleaning that mountainside numerous times, just trying to make sure that it's clean. The fire habitat over there empties, just drags it back down through there. And over the years, this has cost the taxpayers a lot of money. And we have tried to take and do what we possibly can under the state regulations. We, people think dumpsters are just dumpsters. They're guidelines that we have to meet to make sure that those guidelines are met. And a lot of these places are sitting on farceless land. So we have to comply with what they have required us to do. So we have taken, follow guidelines. Things is not cheap. We have trucks, we have got, we have to replace, they're wore out. And people will throw anything in a dumpster. And they don't understand when you throw some metal in there and that truck dumps that into that compactor, that cylinder that presses that in there can be up to fifteen thousand dollars to replace. That's tax money. It has to do with that. That's the reason we're trying to get this organized and we're trying our best to do what we can. But one of the things is, we're doing what we can. We're not trying to take and just dump money into it. We're trying to make sure that it works. And we have had many meetings about this, about trying to get this in place. We've actually had public meetings. We had maybe ten people show up. That's the bad part. When we have these public hearings, people need to attend. They need to be there. They need to have their voice heard. And that's one of the things is we're always there to hear. And that's the reason I, I'm just trying to help. That's all, you know, we're just trying to make sure that we provide the service that we possibly can. And, uh, we encourage these people that wants to have the business to take, be able to pick up garbage for people. We're trying to encourage that. And that's it. It's, it's, it's something that we all have to work together to make it happen. I just sent an email to, uh, Kim the other day about a grant possibility through the federal government that's from five hundred thousand to five million that's on recycling system. So she has forwarded that to our Graham people and hopefully, uh, Southwestern, uh, Commission may be able to apply for that. And if we get that, that's going to help us. That's going to help us make sure we get things where we need to be.
All right, Connie, last one on this question.
Okay, uh, yeah, this has been a long, long, long-term discussion. And in all due respect to Megan and Thomas, so many requests have been made for hard comparison numbers to look at different scenarios and compare them to what we're doing right now. And until we get those numbers, accurate numbers, we will not be able to make an informed and educated decision on how to save money if in fact we can. In, uh, I don't know who's got the best idea, but if we don't have the cost of whatever plan that we're thinking about putting in place, we don't have, we're not on the right path. I was just telling you, we're not. And garbage is not cheap. It's one of the, um, most expensive things that any of the counties have to deal with. Uh, some of the county managers that I've talked to, Swain County is one of them, that went to just a one site and, um, and it, it's really clean and, and everybody seems to have acclimated to it. It's been many years now. Um, but once again, we have to have real numbers to make a decision and not just guess. At what it's gonna cost, uh, or what it might cost. To make it an informed decision on whether we save money or lose money. We've got to know what the real numbers are. And that's not an easy process either. Um, but if, if we're looking at um, closing. Uh, one or two dumpsters and we have Bear Creek, someone mentioned Bear Creek on July the seventeenth. Uh, in one of our uh, board meetings, we agreed to open uh, Bear Creek uh, dump site dumpsters. And there has been um, a Duke Energy Power poll said there since that time. I believe it was Lynn that mentioned the fencing. And I don't know if fencing was hard to get a hold of before the crisis of the last two weeks. It may be even harder now. But we can look into that. But once again, looking forward, if we don't have accurate facts, we can't make accurate and informed decisions. And I, I just want what, what is best for the taxpayers. Um. This, you may not think this is a really smart question. It's probably not. But I ask a lot of people that I'm talking to, what do you get for your tax money that you pay to this county? And sadly, I don't get a lot of information except blank stares. And it makes me feel really guilty and bad. Because at least we ought to be transparent enough so that every taxpayer in this county knows what you're paying for.
All right. All right, Megan, we're gonna start with you on this question. I asked this at the uh, last forum two years ago. It's another one of those problems that unfortunately will not go away anytime soon. Uh, there's money here now and there's programs in place, but how do we address the opening crisis? Here in Graham County. It is a sad reality that we all see every single day.
It is a very sad reality and unfortunately it has gotten worse over the last several years. Um, fortunately, we, we did get some of that um, settlement. Uh, now as far as uh, attending some of the meetings, I was able to, to go to some of the meetings as far as to what those funds would be used for. And we had a couple of good programs, the peer support program. Um, there's a couple ladies that works in the health department and so they go ahead and do outreach of peer support. Um, so I believe that those funds are gonna help um, those positions remain because those positions were actually. Um, the, the prior grant was running out. So we're really thankful that that is gonna continue. Uh, but as far as what, what can we do in the future, I believe that we just have to have all hands on deck. Um, I know that we have Celebrate Recovery, which is a wonderful program. Um, and we have the Rescue Coalition and we have the new um, volunteer program, the Reunited Hope, which I think all of those are wonderful. Those were all started from people just all to the community. And so I feel like that that's what we need to do more of. We need to do more outreach. We need to get people involved. Um, and, and it's really, it's a really hard thing to do. I've, I've been there. I've been there from ground zero as far as when. Those groups were starting and I've been there, you know, years later and, and it is an exhausting process. So we need as many hands on deck as we can get. So I feel like as far as from a commissioner standpoint, if that's the position that I would have. Then I would um, ask for support from the community and I would try to provide as much support as I could. Um, and I would also reach out to any providers in the community um, to help with the MAT, which is like the medication assisted therapies. Um, we do have a few providers in the county that can prescribe those types of medications that can help those folks. Um, get off of the opioids and ultimately for alternative um, with the hopes to one day become sober. Um, like I said, I just feel like we need to do as many things as we can do. It's not gonna be what can you do? It's just gonna be. How many things can we put together as far as as a community and what resources we have? Um, we need to sit down with the grant writers. We need to, like I said, get all the hands on deck. It's gonna be. Um, one of those things that's gonna take a lot of time and a lot of effort um, for multiple entities.
All right. Uh, Lynn, same question for you.
Well, one of the things is, is when you see somebody firsthand that uh, has other days that you're trying your best to. To do what you can to bring them back is sometimes it's exhausting, but one of the things is. Trying to educate those individuals to step up. And volunteer for these programs. The individual has to make that decision. We can throw money at them. We can, we can do whatever we possibly can. But that individual has to make that decision to change his or her life. Um, it affects everybody in Graham County. Some people says I don't, uh, it's not affected me. It does. It affects some person in your family has been affected by it. But one of the things is, 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 you know, when you narc in somebody two or three times. And then in a couple of days, you're doing the same thing again to them. It's, it's get that education out there and, and it's just like. She stated was, we have so many volunteers that are trained. Peer pressure, trying to be able to uh, provide the necessary information to help these people. And the health department has staff that has went out of their way to be able to help. And I know Megan has been a, has been part of that and she has helped push a lot of this stuff through to make sure it happens. And one of the things is, we can do whatever we possibly can to help those people, give them the resources that they need. But in turn, that individual has to make that decision. And there are people out there with success stories and I, and I, and I thank the Lord for that. Because one of the things is, they have to take and they can make that commitment. If they make that commitment, they're gonna have every resource, the person behind them helping them on every step that they possibly can. And I know we have staff that actually goes to our jail system and they do training, they get them jobs, they're helping them. They're trying to get them back on their feet, trying to encourage them. And one of the things is, is you know, we have to take and support. And, and I think our board currently is, has done that. We have done everything we possibly can to help support and do what we possibly can. And it, and just like I stated, our health department is outstanding. They have done extraordinary help and they've helped everybody they possibly can.
All right, Connie, same question.
Um, it is a horrible, horrible plague that we have on families. Every family is affected um, by this. It's called a mental illness. I call it a terminal illness because I know about it firsthand. It is a terminal illness. And there are a lot of programs and there are a lot of people working to help. The people who are ill uh, with this deadly, deadly disease. Um, fortunately, we did uh, have a good sum of money and just recently additional money. Coming in from the opioid settlement because of the number of deaths uh, that we've had here in Graham County. We work um, we have several committees that work on that now and I think Megan has been involved in those as well. Um, but all with the same purpose is to help, if we can help one vote, one person. Thank the Lord, if we can save one person. And Thomas was talking about the people sleeping under the bridge. And sometimes. Um, if I, where I can, I will, I will speak to those people. And they might let me give them a meal, but that they might not. Uh, they might send me on my way. Um, but they are very, very sick. And I know our uh, Department of Social Services is very active in trying to make sure that everybody has housing. That will use it. And I believe the Sheriff's Department has done some work along those lines too. I don't know if they still do that or not. But we have worked tirelessly through the Southwestern Commission. And they caught, they have brought all the seven western counties together to see what. Works best with the monies that we have for all seven counties. And working together, we, we do know that we get better results working together than, than get, getting scattered out. And I know you've been involved in that. Not too. But the problem's not going away. It is growing. Please uh, keep this in your prayers. Because it's gonna take everything we can do and certainly the mighty hand of God to turn it around.
All right. Thomas will be the last one. If you pass mine out to him and we'll get him to answer the same question.
Well, I agree. I don't think Connie, this just makes their family, it's, it's absolutely terrible. Um, also agree with Lynn. They have to be good. That they will. But it's changed, it's been hard to get fixed. Um. Any kind of uh, any kind of work that I've seen has been done by the health department or, 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 or any committee has been, has been, you know, it's been great. And any kind of funds they, they get, I, I think we need to work hard to keep, keep those coming. Any kind of grants. Anything we can do to help them support classes. Uh. It's, it's, it's a, it's a bad deal and uh, we, we just have to keep, keep throwing support at it, doing all we can for these, these people. It's, it's trying to find it.
All right. We're gonna ask one final question then we'll do closing remarks. So we'll rotate back down to Lynn. She'll answer first on this one. Uh, and it's a little timely because we've got a public hearing about it Monday Concerns of Justice. Uh, that being is at six P M. By the way, if you guys weren't attending in person. Um, where are we at on the Justice Center and what are you personally doing to move it along?
Well, we have buddied heads back or the forth, trying to find a, a decent place to have one. Uh, you know, a lot of people's. Well, we, it, it has become a court order from a judge that we have to build a courthouse. Seven years ago. And uh, with the help of our legislators. They have graciously gave us some money and stuff and worked. We have went through different designs, different. Aspects of different areas in the county, looking at different ways. But the biggest thing is, we're trying to make sure it's cost effective. When we first got our first drawing, I think uh. Then the next time it came around, it had doubled in cost at some places. It was like triple cost. The cost has went up so much after the COVID pandemic. That it is, it's made it very difficult for us to move forward trying to get things done. But one of the things is, and it's just like Kevin stated, Monday night, six o'clock. We're having a public hearing where you've got, we've got it down to the three final sites that we have chosen. That we feel like is cost effective and it's more out to be able to comply with the. The expansion of looking for the next twenty-five to fifty years to where that building can actually be used. Are, a lot of people think that the courthouse that we currently have is gonna be done away with it. That's totally wrong. The courthouse that we currently have, once we get a new courthouse built, that is gonna become the administration building. That we're gonna move all the offices for the county into that building. We're gonna try to have it redone. And actually, hopefully that's where the commissioners will have their meetings in the courtroom. And we're trying our best to be able to get this courthouse part started. And then we will take a look at that down the road. But one of the things is, we're at six o'clock Monday evening. We're gonna have some stuff out. We're gonna have the, I think our art architect and some engineers is gonna be there. If you have any questions or concerns, they can be able to answer them. But one of the things is, we're, we have, we have went through different plans, different avenues. We have looked at every possible way and there's always pros and cons for everything. But one of the things is, it, it's moving, but it's moving slow. But we're trying to make sure that we're doing it right. We wanna make sure that we get everything in place. So that way, each stage that we start can actually fall into place without having half of it done and then half of it not been completed. But one of the things is, we're just so thankful for our legislators, our senators and also our representative. Gillespie and uh, Kevin Corbett for helping with some of this funding to be able to get that done.
All right, Connie?
Okay, thank you. Um. It seems like I, I suppose sometimes to the public that, and we're really not looking at, at this problem. Um, we actually, and I think Jacob can attest to this because he might be one of the leaders in eating, sleeping. Uh, or not sleeping about this problem and has been very active in looking at a number of different properties. And we actually have found no perfect property. And we have found the, the price tag to be exorbitant. And that price tag gets passed along to our citizens. So we have, there are so many um, facts to consider. Uh, the place, the cost. Um. How are we gonna come up with, well, when we first started talking about it, we had an estimate of like a six million dollars. Is that right, Jacob? About six million dollars in the beginning. And now it's looking, yeah, eleven? Sixteen, okay. And now we're looking at about forty-two, is that right? Something in that ballpark. So those numbers have grown exponentially. And once again, being mindful and caring about the burdens that we put on our taxpayers. We have to look at every way to get a better price for you. Not only for the Justice Center and the jail, but for everything that we do. We have been ordered to build it. We have been told by our legal counsel uh, that we can each one be held in contempt of court and locked up. And, and I, I don't really wish to do that. So um. Please, if you can at all, come out to the public hearing on Monday. We will have PowerPoints and pictures for you to look at. You'll be able to ask questions to our, to our, to our architects or any of the rest of us that are there will be happy to answer. Anything that for you that we can. And uh, we don't intend to exit the courthouse and leave it vacant. Um, it is a. Solid set in stone gold of mine that we keep that vital, the courthouse vital and downtown Robbinsville vital. And that is um, pretty much the hub that will enable us to do that. There are the things we're working on. But we, we must maintain our courthouse and um, keep it where the people can use it. And enjoy that old beautiful building. So once again, I ask you to please come out and give us your thoughts. I would not be surprised if someone uh, came to that meeting and had a better idea than any of us have had. As many meetings that we've had and I'd certainly be over to listening to that. And it seems like a huge uh, obstacle uh, that we're facing. But when we think about the devastation that has been all around us for the last little while. Oh, it's easy to understand that we're tackling and facing problems that we've. Been all around us for the last little while. Oh, it's easy to understand that we're tackling and facing problems that we've never, ever had to do before. But it's been, it's, it's been a blessing to encourage. The other, the counties that have suffered so much. That Graham County is standing shoulder to shoulder in every way we can to support them. And please keep them in your prayers too.
All right. So for Thomas, Megan, obviously you guys haven't been involved yet. So moving forward, I guess would be the way to rephrase it for you two. How would you? What are your policies, plans, et cetera, for the Justice Center?
So. Of course, we look forward to seeing this, uh, this public here, here comes out of that. Um, I will, I will say this. I've been, I've been much been working for the county for a little over a year. Now they, they, there has been movement on it. I mean, these guys have been. They have been trying to get this figured out. Um. So this justice center, this is one of them lingering things. We, we. We want to do all these things, right? But we can't because we got this hovering overs. We can't, we can't move on with anything because it's, well, we've got to have a justice. It's always that. Um. I, I feel like we're about to move on from that. Um, I for one would, would really, really make this a priority to get this took care of. Just, just so my, my, you know, my kids ain't going to deal with this. This, this is something we didn't get behind us and get done and then move on. Um. And like I say, it, it would, it would, it would, then we can move on to other things. You know, other, maybe, maybe, uh, maybe a red bar. Maybe something, you know, who, who knows what maybe, but, but we've got to get this lingering. We got to get out. We got to get it done. And, and like I say, I, 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 they have been, they have been doing, doing work on this, uh. And I, and I look forward to seeing what comes out of this meeting. Again, like Kevin said, it's not a whole lot. I can say, I, I don't, I've not seen the plans that they've seen. Um. I, I don't know the numbers that they know. I do know this, anywhere this justice center goes in this town is going to directly affect that part of town. It's going to directly affect the part that it comes from. So. Need to be really mindful of where this thing goes to, you know, you, you put it on this end of town, this end of town is going to benefit from. But then we're going to see how this affects this area. So I, I, I agree. I, I think this needs to be centered. Um, I think we'll, uh. I think we could, we could, we could lose the center of our city. If the, uh, if we don't figure something out close. Um. But other than that, again, it's one of those things where I can't really comment a whole lot with that. I, I'm afraid I'd be steering you wrong if I made a whole lot of comments on. Because I just don't have the information they've got. But, uh. Anyways, I'm looking forward to the, uh, the public hearing.
All right, Megan?
So first of all, I think that we need to be thankful for the structure that we do have, considering everybody else faces devastation they have. But I understand that we do have this court order to, to build this justice center. But. When I think about this, I think about how can we build a big fancy justice center? Whenever our, our kids at the elementary school, they have this, you know, these buildings that are how many years old now? I just, I can't wrap my head around. I mean, I realize we need a new courthouse and we need a justice center, but does it have to be brand new and immaculate, billions of dollars? I mean, can we, can we not figure out a way to have an existing building? And I know it, it costs money to remodel, I understand. Um, I have spoken to several individuals in the community about this and I hope to do that more in the future. If I am given that ability to do that. Um. Just speaking with some individuals that work in the school system, uh, and I'm going to be completely transparent. I may not. Be supposed to say this, but I'm just going to tell you. So basically, um, it's been said in years past that there is brands out there that could help us build a new elementary school here on this campus. And so, and so in my mind. The, the current elementary school, could that not be turned into the justice center and courthouse? And then you're still kind of, you know, within city limits right there. Um, and then basically like Thomas said, you're keeping, you know, that part of town active. Um, and you can still use your courthouse for your, um, your, basically your offices and administration and that kind of thing. Uh, and that's just one of the ideas that I have, of course, not, this is not my idea. This is from. Me speaking with other individuals. And like I said before, I always want to listen to people when they give me those ideas. Because it's probably going to be one of those ideas that's given to whoever does sit as commissioner. Um, that moves forward. But I, like I said before, I, I just can't wrap my head around building a big multimillion. You know, new justice center courthouse whenever our kids really get into school first, in my opinion.
All right. Last thing we'll do is, uh, closing remarks. Uh, let's go ahead and start back down to this end of the line and we'll just work our way back across, uh, to Connie, Thomas and Megan. Uh, we'll give you guys two minutes just kind of wrap up everything and, uh, your final campaign slogan for us. No longer pressure Lynn, I'm sorry.
Um. Just like I stated earlier, I'm going, uh, I'm going to do what I can to help the people of Graham County. I'm going to take in, I want to take in three of our services that we have. And. I want to take and be able to search and look for every grant dollar that I can find. And be able to help the county achieve those grant dollars, be able to get them. And one of the things that. That I have done in the past is I've always put Graham County first. I've always made sure our people is taken care of. I want to make sure that we have what the larger counties have. We don't have the bank account that our neighboring counties have. We're very limited on the resources that we have. Because we're basically thirty percent taxable, seventy percent is federally on property. To me, I think the federal government needs to pay their share. How we do that, we have to work with our related officials to be able to push. And to see what we could take and get. And that's what I'm striving to do is trying to do what I possibly can to make sure that the people of Graham County have what they deserve.
All right, Connie?
Okay, um, it's been, it is always an honor to work for the people of this county. Um, every one of you. Uh. It is a goal of mine to be transparent in every decision that we make that is legal. As. I'm one word member, but. I want to see everything that this board does. Oh. I want you to be apprised of it. I want you to know about it. I want it to be transparent. Nothing, uh, done, um, in secret. That involves you paying your taxes. I want to see every dollar that you pay in taxes used for the highest and best use that it can be for your benefit. And I would like to, uh, say that our urgent care opened back up this Wednesday. And not open on the weekends yet, but thank the good Lord for that. Um, but we look forward to having it open on weekends sometime in November. Uh, another thing that is a major concern in this county. Uh, besides our mental illness that affects our children in this county. And we were meeting about the school just, uh, a couple of days ago. Megan, and, and your, your comments were well taken about the elementary school. And. And one of the things that, um, our representative Carl Gillespie was here to do was to. Correct me if I'm wrong Jacob, to look at the walls that were coming apart in the, is that right? In the elementary school building right now. It is not dangerous right now, but we know that it is deteriorating. And once again, I agree that we can build from the inside out. So going forward, I just know that I'm always open to your calls, your suggestions, your questions. And I've listed in the phone book, ask Karen, that's my first name, but feel free to call me anytime. And I ask for your prayers that will always do what is right. Okay.
Thank you Karen and Connie. Sorry about that. Thomas?
So again, I'd just like to, but just, just say one more time. I, I just, I just want to be somebody. That you feel like if you've got a good idea or if you've got a problem, situation or anything. I want, I want to be somebody that you can, you know, whether you vote for me or whether you don't. You can come to me. And I'm still going to, I'm still going to listen to you. I'm still going to pass it on with these guys. And, uh, and we're going to take your concerns serious. Um. Just, just honestly, I mean, I, it, this is, this is all new to me. So, so again, there, there would be a lot of learning. Everything's new to me on this. I'm used to, to a faster pace. I, I've learned from working for the county, you, you, they're just slowing on downs. Uh. That's all new. The policies, these, uh, the grants, the. It's, this, this, this is just something I'm going to have to learn, but I'm willing to do it. Um, I'll work hard for you. I'll listen to you in every, like I said earlier, I've got four boys. When I make a decision, I'm going to look at it like, how's this going to affect my kids now? How's this going to affect my kids later? That's going to roll into your kids, your grandkids. Everything I do is going to be based on that. Cause I've, uh. It's, it's not about me. It's about them. So if your, if your concern is kids, you want somebody that, that. Will do anything for them. Now I'm, I'm. I, I'll be willing to help you out with anything I can. So.
Here. All right, Megan?
So first of all, I want to thank you guys. Um. Technically, I wouldn't even be here today if it wasn't for you guys showing up in the primary meetings. I really appreciate. Um, all the support and I was very humbled by that. So I guess my goal would be to, like I said earlier, always listen to the folks. I want to try to go about it extremely well as much as possible. If I don't know the answer, I want to be able to try to find that out as quick as possible. Um, and so I just, like I said, I just want to serve my community. I feel like the need is so great right now. Um, we want this, this community to flourish for our children. We have got, we've just basically got to do our best in this moment. To make it better for them.
All right. Let's have a nice day for our commissioner. Bye for now. So it's important things to remember. So coming up this Thursday is when early voting begins. I may be one stop to some of you. Uh, the Board of Elections Office has of course moved in the last year or two. It's now in the community building. Adjacent to where you go in to attend the commissioner meetings. So if you guys get lost on geography, it'll be right down there. The early voting runs through on the lead the end of October. And then of course, election day is November fifth. Now, why am I stressing all this? I want to remind everyone in closing, in two thousand twenty-two, we had a school board race here in the county. There was one vote. One singular vote and it was sixteen thirty-six, I believe, to sixteen thirty-five was the final numbers. That separated the final candidate getting onto the board. Your vote does matter and I'm saying that I know everyone in here is here tonight because they are invested and they care. They'll be involved, that's more or less for our Facebook audience.